Heavenly Father, we're thankful for your blessings today and everything, Father. We're so thankful that we are free together here, Lord. We ask for your presence for this here tonight, Lord, bless each and every one that has attended, and we thank you, Lord, for our receiving. These things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you. We have information for council members. Award of the financial reporting achievement is in the information. And we commend our finance department for this, Denise Kelly, for this achievement that was awarded her by the Government Finance Officers Association. Up next, we have the departmental reports. And along with those departmental reports, I'm sure councilors had a chance to review them, may have some question or something, but I'd like to say something this time. Chief McDonald, the other night, we had a tragic incident which two people were killed in our community and others injured, and you were out there at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. I knew that you were there right after it happened, and you were there probably till daylight. I appreciate you for being a police chief that comes out when something big like that happens at 1:00 morning. That's what a police chief's supposed to do, and I appreciate you, sir. We have a public comment. Jimmy Granger.
Yes, sir. I don't know the proper pronoun here, sir.
Well, we're pretty lean back here.
Pretty lean back? All right. Well, what I'm here to talk to you all about today is Armed Forces Day. Armed Forces Day was created along with the Secretary of Defense in 1949 by President Truman. Secretary of Defense Louis Roden, he actually wrote out the details to it, and we've been celebrating it on the third Saturday each May ever since. Well, Armed Forces Day was created to combine the Army Day, the Air Force Day, the Navy Day, and the Marine Corps. Well, the Marine Corps declined, but they still support Armed Forces Day. And I know that we have Veterans Day and Memorial Day, but those are strictly for veterans and for those who paid their ultimate sacrifice and lost their lives in war defending our freedom. Armed Forces Day is to pay tribute to the current Armed Forces members. And what we've done is we've come up with a fundraiser. This will be our fourth year, and we call it the East Texas Freedom Ride. And what we do is we have bands, raffles, giveaways, and things of that nature. We're going to be holding at the Jasper Event Center out here on Highway 190 West this year. Up until this point, it's been a one-day event. We're going to spread our wings a little bit this year, make it a three-day event, and we're also going to include a classic car show. But as you know, things cost money, and we're looking for sponsorships. And roughly startup cost we've got right now is around $3,300. We'd like to let you know that 100% of our profits go to the Wounded Warrior Project, and those, they help people who have been hurt physically, mentally, since September 11th of 2011, 9/11.
I'm just going to kind of reiterate what we do when we go out, and we have our one-day event. 100%, as Jimmy said, goes to the Wounded Warrior Project. The Wounded Warrior Project was started 10 years ago. They are celebrating their 10th year. And they started doing the Wounded Warrior Project because so many veterans were coming back, your brothers, your sisters, your mothers, your fathers, from the Iraq War, and they had no support. They were just lost in our communities. We weren't seeing them. They were losing their homes. They were losing their jobs. So every year, 100% of everything we make goes to this project. In the three years that we have had it, we've donated a little, roughly over $10,000. We had our best year last year. This year, we're hoping to do that $10,000 in one year and be able to donate that. And like Jimmy said, it starts with our community. Without our community, we don't have any support. So we're here not only to ask the city of Jasper to support us in our fundraiser this year, but also for sponsorship, because I think it starts with the city. We're trying to keep it local, and we've done a very good job at doing that. And we kind of want to get that three-day, and we want to see more of the city come out. We're getting more city members, residents here, here. So we're just kind of want to get a little bit more.
How much are you asking the city for? What's a sponsorship?
$1,000. And we'd also like to, we had a parade-style ride, and where we come through the city of Jasper. In years past, the city police have been more than generous, offering us a police escort. If we could hang some flags, maybe have the city fire truck with the big flag hanging somewhere along the route as we come through, something along those lines.
Okay. We thank you. We'll be putting that up, dressing it. And that's when, is that?
It's going to be May 30th, 31st to June 1st of 2014.
Okay. Up next, we have considered approval for three sets of minutes, special calls, city council meeting October 15th, 2013, public hearing October 21st, 2013, and also a regular city council meeting October 21st of 2013.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilman Scott. Is there a second? Second by Hazel Johnson. Any discussion on this issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record shows that the measure passed unanimously. Consider requests from Mr. Roy James from the Honor and Remember chapter. Mr. James.
Good evening. First of all, let me say that once again, it's a privilege to be in your company tonight, and I applaud each and every one of you for your service to this community in order to do the hard work that's necessary in order to run our city, to give us the services that we need. It's sometimes a very thankless job, but I'm here tonight to let you know that as a citizen of Jasper, Texas, I certainly appreciate it, and my family does as well. So thank you for your service. As you know, Honor and Remember was established in this city a couple of years ago, in fact, on Veterans Day, 2011. The county commissioners' court endorsed the organization and what we stood for in our mission on December 8th. The city followed suit with that, and we raised the flag for the first time in Jasper on the 29th of December in 2011. Since then, we've done some wonderful things throughout the entire state and certainly here in Jasper. But tonight, we want to do something very quickly, if we may. The city council stepped up to support our organization and the two-day event that we held here in Jasper on Memorial Day weekend. And it was through your support to help us give some great small-town hospitality to all the families that came from all over the state of Texas to come and receive an Honor and Remember flag. We have something that we would like to present to the city council from the volunteers of Honor and Remember of Texas at this time. If I could have some of our volunteers come up with those pieces, please. First of all, you were also very kind to give us a proclamation for that day and for those families that came to Jasper. And so what we did was is we took the program cover and then also the inside insert of that program, which has all the soldiers that were and the families that were honored that day, along with the city's proclamation, and we put that in a frame in hopes that you would receive this as our thanks and our gratitude for the support that you've given us. And so with that, Keith, one of our volunteers, we'd like to present that to the mayor and the city council at this time. The next thing that we'd like to present to the city council, we created a very specific and individual key to the city for this event, and if I may read it. Be it known to all, on this day, May 24th, 2013, the city of Jasper, Texas hereby presents with deep appreciation and gratitude of its citizens, the key to the city for the selfless sacrifice made in duty, honor, and service for our country's freedom. We pay tribute to honor and remember our Texas fallen warriors and their families this Memorial Day weekend. Sign my lap. We wanted you to have a copy of this that was given to each and every one of those families as well.
Thank you, sir.
Last but not least, we'd like to present you with this framed, signed poster by a very well-known national artist. And if I may just read it, some of you have already seen it in many other forms, but let me read it if I may. It says, "It is the veteran. It is the veteran. It is the veteran, not the preacher, who has given us freedom of religion. It is the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It is the veteran, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us freedom to assemble. It is the veteran, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote." We'd like to also present this to the mayor and the city council for, again, your support.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, I'd ask you to go to your gray folder that we've put in front of you. We have a proposal that we would like to present at this time to the city council, and if I may, I'd like to read the cover letter, which is to your left of the folder. Honorable mayor and council members, on behalf of the Texas State Organization of Honor and Remember of Texas, we would like to propose for immediate consideration the use of the old post office located at 200 North Main as the headquarters for Honor and Remember of Texas, which is located here in Jasper, Texas. The establishment of a headquarters facility for our organization would further establish the respectful knowledge and support of Honor and Remember and its mission. Such a veterans' center would serve and connect our military, their families, support groups and organizations, as well as all veterans, the public, and our schools to a community cornerstone dedicated to volunteerism, service, and patriotism for our community, surrounding area, and the state of Texas. Invitations to make flag presentations at high-profile events in Texas are planned for 2014, with plans for statewide events here in Jasper as well throughout the year. A building such as the one proposed would be a major asset brought to life with year-round activities for all veterans, citizens, and visitors alike. As you may already be aware, Honor and Remember became a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit on Veterans Day in 2008 with the establishment of the Texas organization on Veterans Day 2011 here in Jasper. The state organization was endorsed by the Jasper County Commissioners Court on December 8th, 2011, and the city of Jasper followed. The flag was raised at a ceremony on December 29th, 2011, at the Jasper County Courthouse, while City Hall and other businesses in Jasper are flying the flag. Through efforts and many trips to Austin, meeting and testifying before the House and Senate committees, our governor signed our bill on Memorial Day this year, making the Honor and Remember flag the official state symbol, recognizing the sacrifice of all of our Texas fallen and their families from all conflicts designed to honor and remember in public tribute. Since its founding, the volunteer organization has been focused on our mission to establish this new national symbol for our nation's military fallen and their families in the state of Texas. We present this flag to families from across Texas who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our liberty and freedom. To date, we have presented flags to Texas families here in Jasper, Jasper County, and throughout the state to our fallen, representing World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan. We are also responsible for the only given to date, the only honor given to date, to the families of the fallen from Fort Hood shooting, some of whom were honored here in Jasper on Memorial Day weekend, our annual ceremony. With every presentation made, we proudly represent the fact that we are located in Jasper, Texas, and have created and implemented several annual events here in Jasper, attracting families and support organizations from across the state while attending other events across the state. We know that we have brought a newfound recognition, not only to our national mission statewide, but a new and positive image for the city of Jasper and Jasper County as a whole. We have made sure that our presentations are of the highest honor and perform and present ourselves as the best ambassadors of the city of Jasper that we can be. Our receptions have been most positive and have been met with the utmost admiration and respect. We appreciate your sincere consideration of our request and proposal and look forward to a continued positive and successful relationship in the future. In your packet, you have some information on our organization, our established to serve and connect, which would be the purpose and mission of a veterans' center using the old post office building, to remind you of our personal mission of Honor and Remember of Texas. We've given you a artist rendition, if you will, just to kind of give you a visual as to what the building might look like as that center and the components that would make up our proposal for a lease with the city of Jasper for the building. We've also included a liability policy created for the building on our behalf. There are letters of recommendation by state organizations, citizens, and even the Chamber of Commerce in that act as well. On the right-hand side, you'll find information on Honor and Remember. You'll find information that 17 states have already endorsed the flag as their official state symbol, with approximately 24 more coming on board at various levels of legislation in their state houses.
Roy, I'll tell you, before you go any further.
Yes, sir.
Because we've got a long agenda here tonight.
I'm done.
Council has got about five requests sitting on our desk on that building. And there's no decision been made on any of them, including this one.
Yes, sir.
And council has, we've really kind of dropped the ball on that building because every time that we've been about ready to address that, we've had some kind of crisis or legal matters, or special call meetings, and that sort of thing. So I will, if it pleases this council, I will get that committee together that was appointed, and we'll sit and look at these applications as well as this request here, and then come back with some type of recommendation or bring it back to council.
All we wanted to do was make the presentation and the proposal to have you consider.
There's been no decision on that building at all, and this council, this mayor knows that we've got to do that very shortly to get that ball moving, because we're just sitting there with an empty building, which is not good for anyone.
No, sir.
But so there's no attempt to put it on a back burner. It's just been the, every time, this council's had so many other urgent things that have come up, legal-wise and otherwise.
We understand, sir. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to provide.
Thank you for your questions. Consider table item request to Mr. John Zach Waybright with C O C and I Motorcycle Safety and Awareness, asking the city to hang a motorcycle share the roadside. Is he here?
Yes, sir.
How do you say your name, sir?
You nailed it.
I did?
John Zach, okay. All right. I'm not going to use the money.
Where are you from?
I'm from, I live in Sauer Lake.
Okay.
Got some brothers back there that are around this area. We do a lot of riding up here, and there's a lot of traffic in this area. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for letting us come up here and talk. I would also like to thank you all for the proclamations that we have signed throughout the years, making May Motorcycle Safety Wednesday's Month. So what we're here today to talk about is potentially putting up a sign in your town or signs, multiple signs in your town to help people gain awareness for motorcycle drivers out there. Every day, we get on our bikes. We like to ride on motorcycles. Now cars and trucks have all become offices and places. We talk on the phone, and we text, and we get on the internet, and we drive down the road, and we see. The issue is, is when we make a mistake and a car hits another car, it's a dent. If you make that mistake and you hit a motorcycle, it's a broken leg, a broken hip, brain damage, or death. This happens to brothers of mine, seems like way too often. So we run into a lot of issues where we see, you know, we look at the statistics, and a lot of the statistics around motorcycles versus cars is that, I didn't see them. I had no idea. It's a smaller vehicle. It's hard to see them, you know. So what we propose is to hopefully try to heighten people's awareness of motorcycles out there. So putting up signs, I know we have duck crossing signs like this, we have a truck crossing signs, and there's all kinds of signs. This is a sign for us. So we're asking for the city to put up a couple of signs somewhere throughout your town that is not a text-out sign you can put on one of the major highways, but we can put it on other roads throughout Jasper. Like I said, this is a great place to come up to. A lot of us visit up here and ride. A lot of us live up here.
So it cannot be put on 96?
Right.
Put it somewhere else?
That's right. That's right.
Well, we have a lot of cyclists come through here across the lake.
That's correct. It's a great place to ride up here, you know, there are lots of people up here, and we love to ride up here, so that's why we wanted to put some signs up here, I guess. The sign here is kind of a replica of it, a smaller version. What we propose is the 14 by 14 sign, and this actual share the road is on the sign below the motorcycles.
Council, have any questions or actions?
How many signs are you proposing to put up?
As many as you'd be willing to. We first would ask if you all would be willing to put one up, and we'd probably match you one from the C O C funds. If you all would be willing to put one up, we'd definitely be willing to put one up if you'd allow us to put one up also. If you didn't want to put one up, we might be willing to put one up, or two up ourselves. But it's just, we have to get you all to be on board to allow us to address your town with these signs, so.
Okay. In reference to the locations, evidently you've done this in other cities.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, if we approve this, if you come up with a location, you need to present that to us so we can check with our road crew and our right-of-way crew, see how it would be. That way, we can go from there with what I'm concerned.
And most of the ones that I've done in the past, I've gone to a number of other cities, and from this meeting, I get in touch with the road crew and I get with them about where they'd be willing to put it up or, you know.
Right.
Strongly suggest, you know, I've made some suggestions on it, or he made some suggestions on it, whatever.
That's correct.
Does the council want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Any discussion? Looks like we'll be getting, is that for two signs, Ms. Johnson?
That's correct.
Okay. That okay with you, Mr. Schofield?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record shows measure passed unanimously. Sitting right there at the table is Greg Kelly. He's our public works director, so if you'll get in touch with him at this meeting or after or whatever.
Yes. What I'll do is I'll give you a call if you.
Do you ever ride with Robert Wheeler?
I do.
Okay. He's a good friend of mine in Sauer Lake. Okay, that passes.
Sounds familiar.
Consider approved resolution number 2929, designating authorized suitors for contractual documents and documents requesting close obtained in the Texas Fifty Block Grant Program, contract number 713241.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schofield and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? The record shows measure passed unanimously. Greg, you need to get with him, or is he going to get with you? Okay. They went outside.
No, he went this way.
This way, Greg.
He came this way, Greg.
Okay. Consider approved selection of an engineering firm for fiscal year 2013 C D B G Street Improvement Project, 713241. Does the administration have a recommendation? Okay, after reviewing the proposals, they are suggesting that we go with Goodwin Lassiter, which is here tonight. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopson. Any further discussion?
What about L and L Engineering? Why not use a local one? Somebody's going to spin that phone to you, Jeff.
I'll speak tonight if you'd like.
Ms. Waxman.
Yes, sir. Just to refresh everyone's memory of how this process works, prior to being funded, we put in an application on the city's behalf and worked with an engineering firm. The firm that we worked with was Goodwin Lassiter, who knows quite a bit of the city's work already and is familiar with the city. They did all the preliminary work free of charge. I just mentioned that so that you have all the facts, but it is probably, I guess, sort of my opinion that L and L is better at maybe water and sewer than streets, but that is completely up to the city. But the reason that we are looking at doing this with Goodwin Lassiter is because they did do the preliminary work, and the city had the opportunity to choose whoever they wanted to do that preliminary work up front. That choice was not made for you. So Greg might can speak better than I can, and probably I shouldn't be giving my opinion too much, so.
We think that Goodwin Lassiter had a good look at L and L, if that's a problem.
Well, thank you. That's what I didn't want to say.
What about L and L?
We've had a few problems in the past, work not being completed, different times schedules.
The last project we did with L and L did not go very smoothly, so.
Okay, we've had a motion, a second, we've had a recommendation. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show that Mr. Scott opposed, otherwise the council voted for. Number seven, consider approved resolution number 2931, adopting 2013 property tax rule. Did we skip something?
Yes. Number five, I believe.
Okay, we did. Consider approved by selection of administrative firm for the F Y 2013 C D B G Street Improvement Project, 713241. Recommendation of the administration?
Waxman.
Waxman. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, I'm mixed up here. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
My check, Ms. Johnson, do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schofield. Any further discussion?
We need to have a good bit of discussion on that, though.
No, just joking. Let's vote.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition?
Mayor, may I add one thing before we move on? The city has not received their contract as of yet from T D A. That should be forthcoming this month according to the agency, and we will begin work as far as the environmental goes, and we will not be waiting on the contract so that we are going as fast as we can, and we'll work with Greg and Denise to do so.
Okay.
So, thank you all.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
The two streets, if this is going to pay, right, this is the two streets behind Walker House, Shaw, and Valley and Parker.
Y'all want to pass this down, I'd say, to the line of those.
Okay. Up next, consider approved resolution number 2931, adopting 2013 property tax rule. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Let the record show it passed unanimously. Okay, that's it for the, we've got pursuant.
Right, can I, I have one question here just a minute. Victor Nation?
Okay.
This little, this, let me rephrase that. Just to say that that way. This award that you got, how long have you been our finance director?
Almost 10 years.
How many of these have you got?
10.
Exactly. I want to sit back there. You've got something coming. Thank you, Mr. Nation. I appreciate you at the counter.
Why can't Joe get any award? Okay, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, the city council convened closed executive session discussing the appropriate action on consultation with the city attorney regarding pending litigation, also considering the possible selection of attorneys for tax collection purposes. So show us going into executive session at 31 minutes or 28, well, you want to list your glass, 28 minutes until the hour of 7 o'clock Central Standard Time. For those of you present, everybody, of course, can drink coffee, get a drink of water and stay and do whatever you want. I don't really foresee anything coming that you're going to be interested in, if that is your discretion.
Can I give a one to stop it?
Yeah, just like one here, each spot.
You'd be better out there and walk my distance.
Yeah, just like one, they just stop, and I'll get them when I come back.